Rosie? Do you have extra water?
Yeah. I have to go. Okay. She might be running late. Thanks. Another day working out tomorrow and all that stuff. Okay. Yeah. We'll have to go soon. We'll have to go through it.
It's like everyone's on vacation.
Right. Everybody ready?
Yes ma'am.
Can I have a motion to adjourn closed session?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Seven twenty-six, and we will open our, uh, we're opening our actual open session now, and we'll have the pledge of allegiance. Tonight, even though it is summer break and traditional schools are off session, we still have a full school board meeting. Let's first have Mr. Ron Fletcher, our representative from CWA, lead us in the pledge.
Ron.
Hey, please stand, place your right hand over your heart, ready. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all. Man, I'm having trouble. Thank you.
Ron, we generally have a performance, you know, song, no dance, anything for us today?
Hey, listen, I don't have to sing and dance because you got a little girl down here that's gonna steal the show.
Oh, okay. Thank you. We'll now have our report on closed session.
Yes, thank you President Walker. We have several, the first, the Board of Education accepted the supervisory appointment of Pilar Ayala as Registration Center Supervisor. The roll call vote was unanimous with those present, we did have one board member absent. So Mr. Ayala was not present, everybody else was a yes. The Board of Education denied the request for a thirty day paid leave of absence for classified employee number one two one eight one one seven. Again, we had Board Member Joseph Ayala absent, the other board members all voted yes. The vote of, uh, Board of Education took action to accept the resignation of employee number one nine two two three three seven, effective June thirtieth, twenty seventeen. Once again, Board Member Ayala was absent, the remaining board members all voted yes. The Board of Education took action that employee number one one six one two one seven shall be released from their administrative position effective June thirtieth, twenty seventeen, and shall be reassigned to the position of Agent Induction and Teacher Support Services, two hundred and fifteen days for the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen school year. Uh, Board Member Ayala was absent, the remaining board members all voted yes. The Board of Education took action, uh, with employee number one one zero nine one two seven, that shall be released from their administrative position effective June thirtieth, twenty seventeen, and shall be reassigned to the position of District Lead English Language Arts Strategist, one hundred and eighty-four days for the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen school year. Board Member Ayala was absent, the remaining four board members all voted yes. And the Board of Education took action that employee number one four six nine four two seven shall be released from their administrative position effective June thirtieth, twenty seventeen, and shall be reassigned to the position of Middle School Assistant Principal, two hundred and ten days for the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen school year. Board Member Ayala was absent, the remaining four board members all voted yes.
Thank you. Now we move to the adoption of the agenda. But before we do that, the Board would like to report that the following item be pulled from section reference number J two point five of the agenda, placed on the thirty ninth month reemployment list. Bolin Jeff, Maintenance Re-Welder, as of five twenty-three twenty seventeen, that will be pulled. And then can I have-
There was a reference on that.
Reference number J two point five in the personnel, uh, in the personnel, um, list. Okay. And do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I have a motion to approve as amended. Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And no presentations today, we'll go right into comments. Public comments from the floor, at this time, any person wishing to speak on any item not on the agenda will be granted three minutes, do we have any?
We have several, but I must first get clarification on the order of the requests. I'm not sure if they're in the order that they were written, so I would like to ask the members of the audience if, uh, anyone remembers if they were the first one, because I don't want to be perceived as the order being switched.
I was first.
So they were collected and brought to me, so I'll flip them over so I can go through the correct order. Tina Sanchez.
Before we start the timer, I would like to distribute these, um, formal complaints that will be submitted to Sacramento on my behalf. I want the original and a copy given to President Walker, and then the other ones to each individual board member.
Thank you.
Thank you. One is for Mr. Ayala. Let me know when I can start, because I want to utilize my minutes. May I start?
Reset her, yes, reset the clock for her, and Ms. Sanchez, yes, you can begin.
Good evening, my name is Tina Sanchez, resident of Rialto and employee of Rialto Unified School District. Please be advised that the following will serve as a form of complaint. I am hereby requesting a response in the form of an answer from you and a board policy that addresses the unjust termination of Ocalana Osondo Awike. Board and Superintendent, we have not received a response for our initial request at the April fifth board meeting. I will not formally make my request to Sacramento. I was advised to formally submit my complaint to you, Dina Walker, as the president, and that you would then be obligated to discuss this concern in closed session and submit this former complaint to Sacramento on my behalf. President Walker, you are responsible for upholding the bylaws and Robert's rule of order equally for the entire audience. I have two issues of concern. First, I ask that you be fair and consistent in the application of the rules of order and not allow board members to banter back and forth between board members and audience when it's convenient and favorable for the board or district. Closing comments should not be a time for you to retaliate and express disdain, frustration, and anger towards the speakers, community, or audience. Instead of directing your negative energy at me, spend that time and energy resolving the issues and concerns that have been presented to you. Second, Superintendent and Board, once you have chosen the office of a public official, you become a candidate of public comments and scrutiny. As a parent and community member of Rialto, I find it unacceptable for any of you to speak down to me as if you are not a public official. President Walker, it is unacceptable for a member of your cabinet to address me directly during closing comments, and if you are unclear of what I'm referring to, you please review the last board meeting dated May seventeenth. It is your responsibility to stop them or cut off their microphone. Additionally, I believe that each time a board member expresses that they need to consult with the district attorney regarding a response to an issue or incident, this sends the wrong message to the listening and viewing audience. It implies that there is a criminal component connected to the incident or issue. In this particular case, we are clear that there were no criminal charges filed against Mr. Osondo Awike. Even in his forced termination and resignation, you continue to defame his character. That harms has yet, that harm has yet to be measured. I'm sure after he's gone that the narrative will change to only further justify his wrongful termination. In addition, President Walker, the statement that was made that if the superintendent were African American, then no one would be questioning his actions and motive. In this particular case, you're wrong. For the last two and a half months, nothing but Caucasians and Latino parents have been up here questioning the decision of the superintendent and the board. In this particular case, you have an administrator that until this year has never had as much as a write-up or criminal charge against him. Yet, that was the implied accusation. To me, it makes sense that any superintendent, regardless of race, would be questioned for his bad decision and your support of that same bad decision. This race only became an issue because a coalition of the African American community spoke up at the last meeting. The racial comment is more a reflection of your shortsightedness. Either way, that was an unfair accusation on the part of the board member. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Laura Goodlow.
Good evening, Dr. Avila, board and viewing audience. I would first like to start with a thank you to the board members that attended our eighth grade promotional celebration, which was a great success, so thank you. Um, I would like to know why the position of principal for Frisbee Middle School has not yet been flown. You accepted Mr. O's recognition in March, it is now June. A promise was made to our site for staff and parents of FMS to be able to participate in the interview process for the new principal. It feels like we have waited too long and great candidates were lost in the meantime. Where we, we were hoping to have a solidified principal in place by July first, but now it looks like we'll be starting the new year hobbled and playing catch-up. We were also hoping to not start the new year with an interim principal. Also, we, the staff and our parents, would like Dr. Avila to uphold, uphold his promise to us and allow parents and staff to participate in the interview process to choose the best candidate for the job regardless of race or color. Are you setting us up for failure, or will Mr. O be returning? Finally, I would like to bring something to the attention of the board, that it needs to be noted that all of the people have, that have come to the board meetings and have stated their support for your actions against Mr. O, none of those people are parents of Frisbee Middle School students, not one. Nor are they connected to Frisbee in any way. So their approval of the board's actions will not affect them or their family in any way, but your actions have greatly affected us negatively. Thank you.
Erica Ayala.
Dear Board of Trustees and Superintendent, this is regarding Mr. Osondo Awike, or better known as Mr. O, principal of Frisbee Middle School. My name is Erica Ayala. I am a teacher of twenty-two years within the Rialto Unified School District. It is not often so many teachers will stand before you and express their sincerity and gratitude of an employee of Rialto District and fight for what we all know to be a great value to our school. It is more so complaints as than before, however, this is not the case with Mr. O. Mr. O not only represents his title as principal, but he provides the leadership and disciplinary necessary for Frisbee Middle School. To function well, and without him, the staff, students, and parents wouldn't be pleased if those criteria, criteria were not met. I have worked eight years respectfully and established a strong relationship with Mr. O prior to teaching at Preston Elementary School. It is because of him that has grounded me in my profession to teach quality education with, within all students. He has taught me that through his leadership, how effective he is in ensuring standard teaching, but safety is the number one priority. What I thought was a gas leak in my classroom, Mr. O took my report and responded in a fast and timely manner. By reporting this to the district and ensuring my and student's safety came first before anything and everything. He acted concerned and professional at all times. Mr. O not only has worked diligently within the staff to ensure that all students receive quality education, but also motivating staff by teaching the Common Core standards, collaborating among each other, ensuring parent-teacher conferences, and any other remedial resources needed to make available for students to receive high standards that is expected from the state and local district standards. He definitely goes above and beyond call of duty. Therefore, I am asking elective officials and Superintendent Dr. Avila to reconsider Mr. O's position, to re-instate within the Rialto School District and take into consideration the effortless time that all teachers and staff that are here that want Mr. O to be part of our family. Don't take our great values away from us by letting Mr. O go from the Rialto District family. Thank you.
Celia Zalaya.
Buenas noches, miembros de la mesa directiva.
Good evening, members of the board.
Presidenta Mizo Kelly, Ms. Walker.
President Ms. Walker.
Ms. Walker, excuse me. Superintendent Dr. Avila.
Superintendent Dr. Avila.
Audiencia.
Your audience.
Soy Celia Zalaya Saravi, representar grupo de apoyo.
I am Celia, Celia Zalaya Saravi, and I represent the support group.
Para padres de niños especiales.
For parents of special needs children.
Y esta noche.
And tonight.
Queremos darle las gracias.
We want to thank you.
Al doctor Avila.
Uh, thank this, uh, Doctor Avila.
A Mr. Ayala.
Mr. Ayala.
Al doctor de Sosa.
Doctor de Sosa.
A Mr. Derek Harris.
Mr. Derek Harris.
Por habernos acompañado.
For having, um, come to us.
A nuestra celebración anual.
During our annual celebration.
De los sacramentos de los niños especiales.
Of the sacraments of the special, um, children.
Que se llevó a cabo el veintiuno de mayo en la catedral de San Bernardino.
Which took place the twenty-first of May in the San Bernardino catedral.
Como siempre es un honor contar con su presencia.
Always it is an honor to count with your presence.
Gracias por su apoyo.
Thank you for your support.
También queremos felicitar.
We also want to congratulate.
A todos los estudiantes que se graduaron el domingo cuatro de junio.
All the students who graduated, uh, Sunday, the fourth of June.
Les deseamos mucho éxito.
We wish them lots of success.
También queremos decirles que estamos orgullosos del trabajo que han hecho.
We also want to tell them that we're very proud of the work they've done.
Nuestros maestros.
The work that our teachers have done.
Porque tenemos muy buenos maestros acá.
Because we have very good teachers here.
Y tenemos que mencionarlo para que no piensen de que tenemos malos maestros en este distrito.
And we have to mention that so that people don't think that we have bad teachers in this district.
A nuestro superintendente.
Our superintendent.
A nuestra mesa directiva.
Our board directors.
Les pedimos que sigan trabajando unidos por nuestros estudiantes.
We ask you that you continue working united in favor of our students.
Estamos orgullosos por el trabajo que han hecho hasta ahora.
We're very proud of the work you've done up until now.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Mr. O'Hanley.
Folks, I'm here to speak on behalf of Mr. Mr. O. He's a very good man, and I know he worked very well with my, my son. My wife prepared a statement that I'm supposed to read, but I like to talk from the hip anyway. Uh, my son had a serious problem with ADHD. Mr. O was one who stepped forward, stood up for him, made sure he got the services he needed, uh, and he advanced through the school very well, as a matter of fact. He's a good and decent man. He works hard, he has a lot of integrity, and he has a lot of character. It's hard to find that kind of integrity. It's hard to find that kind of character. When y'all are gonna go and be looking out and trying to find a replacement for Mr. O, you're gonna run down the list of qualities the man had, you're gonna run down the list of MQs that are necessary to fill the position, and you're gonna say, "Mr. O fills that position. He would do that job. He is the kind of man you need for that position." Now, if for some reason he can't continue at Frisbee Middle School, we do encourage you to perhaps give it a second thought, maybe there's another place in the school district.
I am here today for you to reconsider the position for Mr. O resignation. Now, we all know that he was forced to resign. No one in their right mind will deliberately choose to get fired. He was faced with an ultimatum resignation, with dignity and grace and be fired. He chose to resign instead of being humiliated to be fired. With shame and humiliation, I am pleading that even though he will not be at Frisbee Middle School, that you do not remove him from the district entirely. Our school needs him. Our children need him. He is a man with integrity, patience, and charisma. To lose him will take a devastating toll on our children and their future. I have witnessed several cases in the past where administrators were put in the same position and were placed on a different side. I ask you to treat Mr. O with the same courtesy. I currently have a little over a third of the signatures from parents and guardians. They are demanding that Mr. O stay with us according to the law. This is more than enough to keep him. I come to you today to not use the law, but to use reason, to appeal to your better nature. If we use logic, let us use math. Mr. Martinez, you fellow board members, claim that he got 45,000 families complaining about Mr. O. How can that be when there are only 26,000 children enrolled in the school district? That will mean either Mr. Martinez's numbers were greatly inflated and excite rated, or even families on the district to complain or file complaints, at least two per family. I highly doubt that. The entire district is against him, where we have documented proof that a large sum of them is with him. Me standing here before you, you should be more than enough proof that those numbers are wrong. We all make mistakes. It's a human nature, but the dangers of the mistakes are not to admit that you make one. The dangers of the mistakes is letting it be and not going back to fix the one. It's never too late to fix your mistakes or our mistakes. God bless you, and thank you for your patience.
Maria Sandoval.
Buenas noches, Mesa Directiva.
Good evening, members of the board.
Superintendente y público.
Superintendent and the public.
Mi nombre es Maria Sandoval.
My name is Maria Sandoval.
Y la razón por la cual estoy aquí es para testificar.
And the reason why I'm here is to bear witness.
Sobre el acto compasivo que fui testigo en la junta pasada.
To the act of compassion to which I was a witness in the last meeting.
Por la señora Dina Walker, aquí presente.
By Ms. Dina Walker, who's here present.
Me impresionó y me llenó de admiración la actitud tan positiva.
I was very impressed, and it filled me with that narration, her very positive attitude.
Y consciente que la señora Walker demostró.
And the level of conscience that Mrs. Walker showed.
Hacia el padre de familia que habló sobre un problema que tuvo en una escuela.
Towards the parent who spoke about a problem that he or she had in a school.
Este padre tiene una discapacidad.
This parent suffers from a disability.
Y la señora Walker, para ayudarla.
And this Walker, in order to help her.
Y darle el apoyo moral.
And give her the moral support.
Se salió de la junta, y eso me impresionó.
Left the meeting, and that impressed me.
Mucho en lo personal y también a otros padres de familia cuales fueron testigos de.
It impressed me very much personally, and many other parents who were witnesses.
A de ese acto compasivo.
Of this act of compassion.
Eso me dice a mí el gran ser humano que es la señora Walker.
That tells me that great human being that Ms. Walker is.
Porque el problema, aunque no se lo resolvió en ese instante.
Because even though the problem was not resolved at that particular instance.
Ella dirigió al padre o con otras personas para ayudarle y guiarle.
She gave direction to that parent, to go to other people who could guide her and help her.
A responder su problema.
And to resolve her problem.
Señora Walker.
Ms. Walker.
Recuerdo muy bien sus palabras, las cuales me llenaron de mucho orgullo como mujer.
I remember clearly your words, which filled me with a lot of pride as a woman.
Fueron las siguientes.
And those words were as follows.
No te preocupes.
Don't worry.
No estás sola.
You're not alone.
Y todo estará bien.
And everything will be okay.
Usted se esto conectó con el problema.
You connected yourself to the problem.
El dolor y la frustración.
The pain and the frustration.
Que ese padre de familia tuvo en ese instante.
That that parent had at that moment.
Que como ella, hay muchos que no han tenido la oportunidad.
But as her, there have been so many that have not had the opportunity.
De obtener compasión.
Of having that shown, being shown that compassion.
Pero la empatía de la señora Walker.
But the empathy Ms. Walker showed.
Se demostró con hechos.
Was shown with an act.
No solo palabras.
Not simply words.
Para mí fue una experiencia muy poco común.
For me, that was a rather uncommon experience.
Fue una de las cosas que me llenó de satisfacción ese día.
It was one of those things that filled me with satisfaction on that day.
Que los cambios se pueden hacer.
I've gotta stop you now. Translation, right. Two time, right. No, you do.
Oh, okay.
No, you do.
Okay. Que los cambios se pueden hacer cuando hay voluntad y empatía hacia los padres con más necesidades.
The changes can happen when there is compassion and empathy to those parents who are mostly in need.
Después de oír tantas cosas negativas e insultos para muchos padres de familia.
After hearing so many negative things and insults hurled towards parents.
Y falta de respeto para ciertos miembros de la Mesa Directiva.
And the lack of respect towards certain members of the board.
Este acto compasivo.
This act of compassion.
Da muchas esperanzas para la comunidad.
Gave the community a lot of hope.
Es el ejemplo que muchos deberíamos de seguir.
And it is the example that most of us should follow.
Ser mejores seres humanos con todos.
To be where human beings with everyone else.
Ser compasivos unos con otros.
To be compassionate towards each other.
Realmente sin importar la raza.
Really without looking much into race.
Cultura o el lenguaje.
Culture or language.
El ser compasivo es sumar en la vida de cada ser humano, no restar.
To be compassionate is to add in the life of a human being, not to subtract.
Mi pregunta para todos los aquí presentes.
My question to all those here present.
Qué hubiese pasado si ese acto compasivo lo hubiera hecho Dr. Avila?
What would have happened if that act of compassion would have been shown by Dr. Avila?
Mr. Montes.
Mr. Montes.
Mr. Martínez.
Mr. Martínez.
O Mr. Ayala.
Or Mr. Ayala.
A un padre de familia latino.
Towards a Latino parent.
Exactamente como lo hizo la señora Dina Walker.
Exactly as it was done by Ms. Walker.
A este padre de familia afroamericano.
To this Afro-American parent.
La percepción.
The perception.
Hubiese sido de parte de muchos.
Would have been on the part of many.
Como han sido las últimas juntas de la Mesa Directiva.
As have been those perceptions that we've seen within the last few meetings.
Que existen el favoritismo y la discriminación.
That there is favoritism and discrimination.
De parte de algunos miembros de la Mesa Directiva.
And the part of certain boards and members of the board.
Pero hoy les demuestro con hechos que esto no es así.
But today I show you with facts that this is not the case.
Yo no estoy aquí acusando a nadie.
I'm not here to accuse anyone.
Ni traigo a padres de familia calentándoles la cabeza que vengan a acusar y a gritarles cosas a la Mesa Directiva.
And I'm not here bringing parents all heated up to come and insult the board members.
Que estos actos compasivos existen especialmente para demostrarle a nuestros hijos.
That these acts of compassion exist precisely to show our children.
Que no existen barreras raciales cuando realmente.
That there aren't any racial barriers when we really.
Se quiere ayudar y apoyar a los más necesitados.
Want to help and support those in need.
Qué impactante sería que entendiéramos.
What an impact it would have for us to understand.
Que lo que nuestros hijos necesitan es tener con hechos y ejemplos de los padres y maestros.
That what children need is to see with acts and facts that our parents and our teachers.
Estos actos compasivos y de respeto.
To show these acts of compassion.
Porque si yo no respeto a las personas.
Because if I have no respect for people.
Probablemente mis hijos no van a respetar a nadie.
Then most likely my children won't respect anyone else.
Muchas gracias y que pasen buenas noches.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Gabriela Solís.
Buenas tardes, miembros.
Good evening, members.
Dr. Avila.
Dr. Avila.
Y miembros de la comunidad.
And members of the community.
Yo estoy aquí el día de hoy.
I'm here today.
Haciendo un llamado a todos.
Calling on everyone.
Los administradores.
Administrators.
Padres de familia, maestros.
Teachers.
Ustedes.
Yourselves.
A nuestros hijos también.
Also to our children.
A que seamos un ejemplo.
For us to be an example.
De unidad y de comunidad.
Of unity and community.
Basta ya de ser, y voy a hablar manera arcaica.
Enough for us to be, and I'm gonna say this in a very old-fashioned manner.
No somos ni negros, ni cafés, ni blancos.
We're not black, we're not brown, we're not white.
Somos una comunidad.
We are a community.
Orgullosamente diversa.
Proudly diverse.
Y así tenemos que demostrarlo.
And that is what we have to show.
Es triste ver.
It is very sad to see.
Como cuando vemos, veo estos board meetings.
Like when I come to these board meetings.
En el YouTube.
And when I see them on YouTube.
O stream.
Or when I stream them.
Veamos que estamos peleándonos unos contra otros en lugar de hacer esto un mejor distrito.
To see that we're fighting amongst ourselves instead of working to make this a better district.
Creemos ciudadanos del futuro.
We should create citizens of the future.
Con respeto.
With respect.
Con ejemplo.
With examples.
Unidad.
With unity.
Creo que ya basta. Somos adultos todos los que estamos aquí, y seamos un ejemplo para nuestros estudiantes.
I think if we do.
Hagamos de este distrito.
We're all adults who we are here present. Let's make this district.
Un distrito que sea un ejemplo.
A district that is.
Basta ya.
A district that is exemplary.
Basta ya de siempre faltarnos al respeto.
Enough of disrespecting each other.
Si trabajáramos en una empresa y un empleado viniera y le dijera un directivo, "Shame on you," en ese mismo instante, esa persona sería dirigida hacia su lugar de trabajo, recogida sus cosas y acompañado al parking.
If we worked in our corporation, an employee came and told.
Pero aún así.
Shame on you, that person would be walked, escorted to their place of work, then pick up their stuff, and be escorted all the way outside to the parking.
Ustedes son un ejemplo de paciencia.
You are an example of patience.
Y eso es un orgullo para mí y yo un gran ejemplo para mis hijos.
And that represents a great pride for myself and a great example for my children.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Patty Reese.
Good evening, board members. Dr. Avila, just here to say that any action you take affects all the students. They should always be our main focus. It's very sad to hear that people come here and they attack other parents just because they come here to voice their concerns, like Dear Consuelo says. Deal with the elephant, but leave the children alone. They have their own struggles already, and trust me, these people here have no favorites. If they would, we wouldn't need to hire attorneys or advocates. And yes, we do cry. We do cry loud, and we will continue to fight for our children just so they could receive all the services that they're entitled to by law. And this book teaches us how to cry and fight for our children's rights. I suggest you guys buy it.
Could I get the title of the book, please? The title of the book, please? Special Education Law by Peter W. D. Wright Esquire, Pamela Dar Wright, Masters MSW. Thank you. I'd accept that for the district. Yes, thank you.
Frank Montes.
Good evening, Board of Education, Superintendent Navila, President Walker. I've been watching a lot of these meetings through YouTube, and I'm so disappointed that our community is attacking each other that way. I've sat here listening to many of the speakers, and it's very disrespectful when you have heckling in the back or grumbling noises. Believe me, that's not who we are. The fight is not with us here. It's not with the teachers, the principals, whoever. The fight is out with other countries ready to attack us. You need to start thinking that way. Quit attacking your own community. Quit fighting amongst each other. That is so childish. I guarantee you that if your children were here, or if you looked in the mirror, a year later from now, you're gonna look like, "Man, maybe I could have said it another way. I could have got my point across more respectfully." Remember, it's not how much you say, it's what you say. Now, I want to address Mr. Avila. As a superintendent, I know it's very difficult for you to create change without rattling the cage, but that is your job. Your job is to make sure that this district is running the best it can, and that's what you were hired for. Now, the changes you're making now, we won't see any effects years from now. But I've met with the superintendent, and I've talked to him, and the first thing I said to him was, "How are we gonna deal with these race issues that happen in the city of Rialto?" I've never seen it so bad. One day I had to come here because it was Latino, African-American. I had to come and tell them to stop, and the great thing is that a lot of the African-American community know me. So I have, I work with everybody. When you start bringing race into this, this has to stop. This has to stop, and shame on you guys. I gotta say it, shame on the parents. You guys come and really, it's really sad. It's really sad, because it's about our children. It's about our children. There's ways of reading your point across respectfully. Now, to the board, I see those faces on you. You know, it's difficult to sit in your positions. It's very easy to come at the bully pulpit and chastise the board. That's the easiest thing to do. The hardest thing to do is work with them and find resolutions together. This is our community, and we will fight for it. Thank you.
Enes Wanzar.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I will not be speaking. This will be speaking for me.
And I, the word, the first thing I said to him was, how are we gonna deal with these, these race issues that happen in the city of Rialto? I've never seen it so bad. I, one day I had to come here because it was Latino, African-American, I had to come and tell them to stop. And the great thing is that a lot of the African-American community know me. So I have, I work with everybody. When you start bringing race into this, this has to stop. This has to stop and, and shame on you guys. I gotta say it, shame on the parents. The, you guys come and, and really, it's really sad. It's really sad because it's about our children. It's about our children. There's ways of reading your point across respectfully. Now, to the board, I, I see those faces on you. You know, it's, it's difficult to sit in your positions. It's very easily to come at the bully pulpit and chastise the board. That's the easiest thing to do. The hardest thing to do is work with them and find resolutions together. This is our community and we will fight for it. Thank you.
Inez Wanzar.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
I, I will not be speaking, this will be speaking for me.
Can you reiterate though?
Yeah, I'll see.
Can you?
Did, did you wanna share the, what?
What it is?
The words?
Oh, yeah, I would rather it's, I'd rather it speaks louder.
It's all the way up. Okay. Is this, all right, is this on?
I'm, it's on record.
Okay, great, we'll just put it right there, okay. It kinda makes up everybody.
So this meeting is being recorded by mom and also the district. So what we'll do is we'll start off by doing introductions, so we'll give our name and our role. My name is Erlynne Hyman, I'm a program specialist from the district office.
Haminoz Wanzar.
Seth Greenestud.
Sarah Michi, social worker. Kaiser Fontana.
Jacqueline Johnson.
Jerome Rocker, case carrier.
Pam Carter, nurse.
Michelle Magaña Boswell, school psychologist.
Ollie Coss, special ed director.
Excuse me, you all may have to speak louder, so my hearing is also picking you up.
Oh, okay.
Cause I have a hearing as well and that's why we prefer to have all of my needs reported because I have a hearing. So I'm giving notice today that any other IEPs.
They were just informing me that if that is a recording of an IEP meeting, we can't broadcast it. Because that's a violation of the students' rights and that would inform that other people would be at the privacy of a student.
Well, I can ask my son's meeting to be public and being intimidated by the lawyers, I, they had some people there who would not tell who they, who they were. And so I made it private, but I wanted it public. I can, I can show you another recording that has nothing to do with IEPs then. If that's okay with you.
So, hold on for just one second, only because I'm not sure about, about that.
Can you email it to the superintendent's office?
No, sir, I cannot email. I, I do have the right to have my time here, correct?
Yeah, you do.
Okay.
It's not much left, unfortunately.
So.
My hearing, my understanding is that the special education department has been communicating with you and writing. So did they give you copies of those to have available at the meeting? Because I did request the person that I spoke, do you know who I spoke to on the phone that called for this meeting? Oh, it was you.
It was you.
Your name?
Jennifer.
Okay. Do you remember me stating that I would like in our meeting to have in writing the statements about all of the complaints that I put in?
Um, I honestly, I speak to a lot of parents, I don't specifically remember. I know I called to getting the information and writing.
Okay, so my complaint, some of them are not on the due process. Some of them don't, don't even concern the due process. So you're saying that all of my complaints, you're placing them under the due process?
No, some of the complaints such as a female aide, she's working on it and I believe she told you she will be working on it.
This is a recording and just as I have stated, we all need to record all of our meetings. Because no one seems to know who is, what they're saying. And if it's recorded, they can go, go back and see what they're saying.
Thank you.
We don't have any more not on the agenda, we do have one on the agenda.
Okay.
You want it, not on the agenda?
Well, it was agenda.
Yeah, it's checked off on the agenda, that's why we have to wait until the next section, so. Next we have Ivy Tillery.
It was off the agenda.
Yeah.
Hi. First of all, nobody, nobody asked me to be here, nobody asked me to speak for them. The things I'm gonna say are things I've noticed myself, thank you. So at the risk of beating a dead horse, I would still wanna speak briefly. My name is Ivy, I'm a parent, a Rialto resident and a volunteer. I've seen in the past few board meetings, parents, Rialto residents, teachers, nurses aides, school staff and people who know Mr. O, the principal of Frisbee Middle School. They talk about him, his character, the impact he's had over the course of 25 years of dedicated service. I've also seen more of a presence by certain board members at Frisbee, thank you. What I have not seen is what I thought I would have seen by the board is Ms. Walker or Ms. Kelly at Frisbee. There was a few questions I've had for you guys and you guys were not there. You guys have not asked questions that I would've liked to have heard. You know, regarding Mr. O's forced resignation, it would've either prevented his resignation in the first place. We did not make this a race issue. We asked if it was a race issue. Because of the people that were being let go or pushed out. It is impossible to expect the public to buy that all of this is just a coincidence. It's too much to ask for people to swallow, that someone who's willingly dedicated 25 years of amazing service to this community would voluntarily resign. I've asked the question that's popped into my head the first time I heard Mr. O was resigning. And the question that screamed in my head when I heard the phrase, if the puzzle piece doesn't fit, remove it. Was it because this puzzle piece was black? Was it because it didn't speak Spanish? Or is it because it asked certain questions people didn't like? And when somebody, when someone finally did hold your feet to the fire, you called him out in the last closing statements. Thank you.
That's all we have.
Next we'll have comments from Association Executive Board members, Rialto Education Association, REA. No? Okay. California School Employees Association, CSEA. Communication Workers of America, CWA.
Are you subbing for them?
Uh, listen, I wished I could speak as well as some of the students you've had come up here. I've got four things I wanna talk about. Uh, one, earlier you were talking about the math situation and everything and I don't wanna say anything about. Doctor Zeus is doing a great job trying to do it, but I was really shocked at the low scores. And, but I'm further shocked because this week in the paper, Cal State San Bernardino is talking about adding four years of math. And for them to be able to enter. So obviously, your students have to be well-trained, which means you gotta train your subs. I'm sorry I couldn't attend to your graduation and I know I missed a lot of good speeches by the students. It's always great to listen to what they think the world is going and everything and you just sat there and you laughing a little bit and you just. You gotta honor their dreams. I mean, they came up, they had us for parents and they survived. Okay, I will try to plan to go next year. Uh, we have our contract adjustment on tonight's thing. And I would really like to thank Rhonda for making it so professional and doing it so quickly. And I'm looking forward to next year when I expect to have Rhea and Rhonda. And, cause we're gonna be doing a whole new contract next year, so that ought to be good. Uh, the only thing I would like to have done more this year is we gotta have some training people. I don't have any training yet, you gotta get busy on it. And now, there's one more thing I wanna talk about that's in your agenda for tonight. I noticed that you have fourteen boys and girls from Rialto High School going to Mammoth. Years ago, my girls came over here to run. Dave Japs was a teacher here in Rialto and he created the Road Runners. My girls ran for the Road Runners for over ten years. One of them set a record down there in Carlsbad that's lasted for seven years. I really, I went to Mammoth with them every year and I ended up cooking. When you cook for a hundred and forty runners plus the coaches, you got your hands full. So I'm very happy to see that you are going to spend the money to send your kids up to Mammoth where they can learn to run in altitude and make better runners for them. So I'm really happy to see you're doing something for your runners, thank you.
Rialto School Managers Association, RSMA. Nope. All right. Next we'll go to, I thought she was saying she doesn't wanna speak. CSE, okay. Comments from the superintendent?
Thank you, President Walker, and good evening. Uh, this is June, we're in June now and June is the month of children, or Children's Month. And it's so fitting to be able to congratulate all of the students for all of the achievements, awards, scholarships that they received at the end of the school year. Congratulations to all the students who promoted from elementary to middle school and from middle school to high school. And of course, my deepest congratulations to our seniors who graduated from high school this past Sunday. Way to go and good luck in your new endeavors and do everything that you possibly can to make our world a better place for everyone. I also want to thank those who organized our very impressive Honor Our Own celebration a couple of weeks ago. And of course, to those who were recognized at Honor Our Own, thank you for your years of service to the children of this district and community. Congratulations to the hundred-plus parents who graduated from the Parent Institute for Quality Education, or PEKE, at Carter High School a couple of weeks ago. What a way to stay connected to your children's education while modeling expectations and a commitment to excellence. I also want to take a minute to say thank you to everybody who was involved in this year's journey. As it takes all of us to provide every child in our district a quality education that each deserves. Uh, you may have seen the full-page spread in the Rialto Record and the Sun newspaper to highlight just some of our district's successes and school accomplishments. It has been a tremendously successful year across the district, no doubt, but it has been, been so thanks to you, to each of you. And I thank you for trusting me as your leader. Uh, I sincerely thank our teachers, our classified staff, our administrative leaders, parents, parent volunteers, members of the community. And know that you are in good hands with this Board of Education who has vowed to put children's interests first. I also tonight want to, like to acknowledge the passing of Melody Faith Anya Riley. Who was not only the daughter of former Assemblywoman and the first African-American school board member in our district. And Carter High School namesake, Wilmer Amina Carter. But Ms. Riley was a 1978 graduate of Eisenhower High School. She went on to earn her bachelor's degree from Cal State San Bernardino in Political Science. And master's degree in Public Administration from Cal State Sacramento. She retired from the California Department of Corrections last December. She passed on May 20th, 2017 at the tender age of 57. I attended her service, as did many district personnel, and our thoughts are with, are with Mrs. Carter. Thank you, Ms. Riley, for your service to our community, your district will always be proud of your successes.
Next we have comments for the board, from the board, Ms. O'Kelly.
Uh, yes. Well, good evening and thank you all for coming tonight. And I wanna, I just wanna say that I did really appreciate the comments about our community and being a community and working together. Because that's the only way we're gonna accomplish what we need to accomplish. I've been a part of this community and I have loved this community and I've dedicated my life to the children of this community for almost 40 years. So I really want us all to work together so they have a chance at the best future we can give them. Well, and we've had a busy few weeks. Uh, since the last board meeting, I attended the Eisenhower Scholarship Awards Night, which was very well-done. And I always love those scholarship awards nights, cause that's when our kids get the opportunity to receive scholarships for their 12 years of hard work. Next, I attended the We Honor Our Own event. And that's where we, as Doctor Avila said, we honor the employees of the district for their various years of service and we honor the retirees. And this is just a wonderful event for an old-timer like me because I get to see so many people that I'd never see anymore. As they are honored for their years of service, so that was a lot of fun. And then, oh, then after that, I also attended the Ike Eisenhower Ike Choir Spring Concert. At, they have to hold it at Carter High School, cause their, their theater is not built yet. But it is always just an amazing concert, I mean, it's a wonderful night of entertainment. On the 24th and the 25th, I attended all five middle school promotion ceremonies, which are always fun. And last Sunday, uh, the board and the superintendent, as well as several district staff members, spent the day at Citizens Business Bank Arena uh, for our high school graduations. And this is like my favorite day of the year because there's nothing like the excitement of those 17 and 18-year-olds as they walk across the stage to get their diplomas. The student speeches were amazing, a couple of them got standing ovations from the board and the audience, they were really well-done. And it's, like I said, I just love shaking their hands, handing them their diplomas and, and wishing them the best of luck. So, great graduation day and I hope everyone has a safe, happy and fun summer. Thank you.
Next we'll have comments from Clerk Montes.
Thank you, Board President, Ms. Walker. Well, first of all, I'd like to just welcome everybody here tonight. Um, wanna say good evening, buenas noches. Um, I do, I too do, I, I also want to congratulate all of the honorees at the We Honor Our Own District Event. Honoring people that have retired 35 years, anniversaries, 30, 25, all the way down to 15-year employees. Um, it, you know, it's really something special that the district does for, for, to recognize the time and dedication of hard-working employees of this district. Employees that have been here, not just 15 years, but the ones that have been here all the way up to 35 years and the ones that have retired. Not very many places recognize their hard-working, long-time employees. So, um, it was really nice for the board, for the superintendent, well, for me to see everybody there and, and enjoy that, that time of recognition and honoring for the dedicated people of this district. And, and also, you know, they had a little dance in there, so that was nice for the families of the employees and whatnot to mingle. I want to also just thank the district on another successful, very beautiful graduation at the Citizen Business Bank Arena. Graduations were off the hook. A student for the first time snatched a diploma out of my hands and all I could do was laugh, you know, I, I know the student was excited and um, many of them were basically doing cartwheels off the stage, so. So, um, it was really, really electrifying, uh, to see so many families, something that would never be possible at any of our high schools this day and age, because, uh, the students are allowed to bring all of their families, unlimited amount of seating, as long as they pay for parking, uh, they're all welcome. And, and, and the Citizens Business Bank definitely fits everybody. So that was really awesome to see. I, um, I do want to say, um, that, um, I appreciate, I, I, well, I first would like to, um, thank, uh, Mr. Frank Montez for, uh, coming here today, um, to share some comments and, uh, concerns, uh, with us. Uh, nobody, nobody called him, but he decided to come anyway. Uh, Mr. Frank Montez is a very well-known leader in this area and probably statewide and knows many of us here on this board, and we appreciate, uh, all of the hard work you do and, uh, for all people, and, uh, and we appreciate, I appreciate your words. So thank you, uh, Mr. Frank Montez. I, I want to also just say that, um, I, I, I understand, you know, people, some people from the community, um, uh, have come to speak, uh, to thank the board and superintendent for a lot of the hard work that, that, uh, that, that we're doing and a lot of the good things that are going on. And a few people from, uh, from the community and, uh, some of, some of our own employees have come to the podium and, um, and also, uh, shared concerns and comments, uh, of things that they, they're not too happy about, um, things that they're upset about, and, and that's fine. Um, that's fine. Uh, anyone can come here, whether you're from the community or whether you're an employee, anyone can come here and, they have the freedom of speech and they can say anything, almost anything they want. Um, but what I do have a problem with is we can't, we, we, we can't, we can't expect nothing from people who, we can't expect nothing from people who do not work for the family of this district. But for the people who work in this district, who are part of the district family, I do want to say that I think it's unfair for anyone to come here and scream and yell at the superintendent, at the board, at board members, and do so in a condescending manner. And, and I'll tell you why. Not because, not because, not because it's being done to us. Everyone, people have a right to be upset, but what, what upsets me as a parent is when parents and people of this community see our own staff members screaming and yelling and speaking in a disrespectful and condescending tone to our superintendent and this board, and it's the same district that they work for, that, that upsets me a little bit, because it makes me wonder, well, I hope, I hope to God that they do not do that to the, to the parents and the students. My four-year-old saw the meeting, this last meeting, and asked my wife, "Why are they screaming and yelling at Dad? Who is that, Mom? Who is that screaming and yelling at Dad?" Well, unfortunately, it's some of the employees. And you have, people have every, I have no problem at all with freedom of speech. People, people can come and say whatever they want, but it does make me wonder and hope that we're not treating our sta, our parents and our students that way.
And employees. And employees.
Everyone, anyone, anyone. No one deserves to be spoken to. No one deserves to be screamed at. No one deserves to be spoken to in a condescending manner, and no one deserves to be, uh, uh, accused of false allegations. No one, no one deserves to be, uh, accused of being racist without any facts. No one deserves to be, uh, facts and phrases be turned and twisted. Mr. Martinez never said forty-five thousand families complained about anybody. He never said that. And, 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 and I just want to say, and if I could just finish, and if I could just finish, I just want to say that all I ask is that we treat each other with respect and dignity. That's all I ask. Anyone can come, anyone, anything that has ever been said can be said in a respectful manner, in a respectful tone. There's no need, there's millions of ways to get a message across, and I refuse to engage in screaming and shouting or being disrespectful, because I will, I don't appreciate being spoken to that way, and I refuse to speak to anybody that way. That's all I have to say. Thank you, Ms. Walker.
Mr. Martinez?
Thank you, President Walker. Um, you know, as an elected official, you never know what's going to come out of anyone's mouth at the, the supermarket or at the podium. So, you know, for me, you know, I don't like it when, when people are yelling at me. Matter of fact, I tend to shut down. Um, I hear you better when you're communicating calmly. Most of this stuff's been said tonight, and I just, I sit here and I chuckle, because I often use analogy of Rialto family. And we really are. You can see all the dysfunction and the function in the family. And it's okay for me. I'm speaking for myself. Why, I don't care for, um, being yelled at or accused, especially when I can't respond. It's inappropriate to respond. Thank you for coming to my aid, everybody, Frank, Edgar, um, many community members. I don't think any less of you. That just means that on one topic, we're not on the same page. But I know, whether you're yelling at me, you're yelling at me because of your belief and, and you're passionate about it. What I know I can count on you for is you're for our kids. You're trying to do the best in your belief for our students, and I thank you for that. Being an elected official, official, uh, if you're in the union, you know that it's a thankless job being in the union and repping anybody. Repping as an elected official is no different. It's a thankless job. So when we get to see our students highlighted, uh, such as on graduation, it is the one day that I live for all year long. I can take all, uh, the stuff all year long, as long as I've got my kids to, to fall back on. And they were wonderful. You saw them as, uh, as young adults, and you saw them goofing off like little kids at the same time, because that's who they are. I realized a long time ago that with my son and with any individual, myself included, input to an individual, and I'll just take to myself, I stopped taking input somewhere around twelve or thirteen from my parents. So I know that whether it's a Sunday school or a middle school or an elementary or any, any youth, I've got that much time to ingrain in them a, a solid foundation. Beyond that, it's their choice. They're getting to be their own person, their own personality, their own belief structure. So, um, we're all on the same page on that one, doing the best for our kids. So, thank you all.
And I just want to start off by saying, uh, the, uh, We Honor Our Own, thank you guys for doing that. I was out in the community last week sometime, and a gentleman who ran the facilities where I was, he said, "I just want to say thank you." And I was like, "What, what did I do?" And I'm thinking, "What did I do?" Um, and he said, "Thank you for what you guys did for my wife." And I was like, "What did we do?", because I didn't know who he was talking to. And he said, "My wife, uh, works for Rialto and the, the ceremony and the banquet that we did." And he said he was so thankful for what they did. He was a great, you know, it was a great night. It made her feel so good. And, and she, he was an older gentleman, so I'm assuming she was probably one of our twenty-five-year-plus, um, employees. Um, so just for him to have that and, and remember to see, and he just saw me somewhere out in the community and just said, "Thank you." So, thank you all for what you did for our employees, because it really makes a difference for them. Um, thank you. Um, graduations, yeah, we did the whole Sunday with all the graduations. Great to see the new, uh, kind of the new, uh, outlook on the young people's lives now, when they think that, I guess they think that they know what's going to happen after that. You saw some of the joy, uh, Mr. Montez said, they, they were dancing, almost turning cart, cartwheels, and some of them fell and, you know, snatched diplomas, grabbed diplomas, and walked away without shaking hands, and you know. It was, it was crazy, um, but the excitement for all of them and, and, um, with the student speakers and what they were telling their class about what to look forward to and, and what they were thankful for, um, it really gives us kind of really a lot of hope, um, for our generation and what we're, what we've poured into them. So, great opportunity. I just wanted to really speak really quickly on, um, just something, um, for those of you who, who had a concern about, um, me showing up at Frisbee. Um, there's a thing called the Violation of a Brown Act. Um, and I tried to go, but you can't have more than two board members at a meeting unless you call an official meeting. And I tried to get Dr. Avila to do two meetings, and he informed me that I was still violating, I would be creating a serial board meeting by going back and meeting with parents, so I could not do that. Um, so, uh, but, uh, Board Member Ayala has provided, every time he's come and provided us with, with notes, and I've been able to read them. We've been able to share and talk about what we're doing, um, in support of Frisbee. So don't be that I haven't heard or anything like that. I just didn't want to, uh, get a case, uh, so, from that standpoint. And also have, have been in contact with Mr. O. as well, so personally. Um, so, um, just wanted to say again, this is the end of this, end of the year. Thank you all for coming out for the board meeting. Um, we still have one or two before the, you know, taking care of some business, um, before the, uh, year ends, uh, the official year ends, and we'll be talking about our LCAP. Uh, and for those of you, anybody who participated in the development of our LCAP, thank you for all the time. And we were able to go over it in our closed session, our board session, uh, earlier today. It's really thorough, um, it's really looking at some of the things that we need in our district, and I see a lot of new things and creativity in it. So thank you all for putting your input in it and working with our district staff to put something together. Um, so with that, we're gone. Thank you.
Next, we'll have, if I can have a motion to move into our public hearing? So moved? Okay. Okay. Any person wishing to speak on the item, on, any, on an item on the public hearing agenda will be granted three minutes. Number one is the LCAP adoption fiscal year twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. Education Code EC Section 52062B1 requires that a governing board of a school district shall hold at least one public hearing to solicit, solicit the recommendations and comments of members of the public regarding the specific actions and expenditures proposed to be included in the Local Control and Accountability Plan or annual update to the Local Control and Accountability Plan. The agenda for the public hearing shall be posted at least seventy-two hours before the public hearing and shall include the location where the location, where the Local Control and Accountability Plan or annual update to this Local Control and Accountability Plan will be available for public inspection. So, we are now in open. Are there any, uh, speakers for the public hearing on the LCAP?
There are none.
None? Okay. Do I have a motion to close public hearing?
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Do I have a motion to open public hearing for item number two, budget adoption?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay, for, item number two is budget adoption fiscal year twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. Educational Code EC Section 52062B2 requires that the public meeting at which a school district governing board adopts a local control and accountability plan, LCAP, and adopts a budget must be held after, but not on the same day as, the public meeting at which the governing board holds the required public hearings on the LCAP and the proposed budget. Reference number D two, point one. Are there any, uh, to speak on the public hearing for the budget?
There is none.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved?
I thought we did that, but second?
Oh, second, I'm sorry. All in favor? Yes, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Consent calendar items, all items on the consent calendar will be acted upon in one motion unless pulled by the Board of Education members or the superintendent for an individual action. Do I have a motion to approve consent calendar items, reference E through J?
So moved?
Second.
Second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, motion passes. And then we'll be into discussion items. Item number one, to approve the new courses that will be utilized by all secondary schools in the district beginning with the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen school year. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? No? Okay, then all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number two, to approve agreement between the San Bernardino Community College District and Rialto Unified District, Rialto Unified School District's Adult Education Program, which will allow us to be an active member of the AB 104 AEBG Consortium and receive an allotment of nine hundred and twenty-four, nine hundred and twenty-four thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars from July first, twenty seventeen, through December thirty-first, twenty nineteen. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I just want to add that anybody who's going to give us nine hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars, I don't think we're going to not approve it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number three, to approve, approve the illuminate data and assessment system agreement with illuminate education incorporated. That includes the Inspect Item Bank from, the Inspect Item Bank from July first, twenty seventeen, through June thirtieth, twenty eighteen, at four dollars and fifty cents per student for illuminate services, software, and grade cam. One hundred and fifteen, one hundred and fifteen, one hundred and fifteen, five hundred and seventy-eight dollars, and one dollar and fifty cents per student for an Inspect Item Bank of thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and twenty-six dollars, at a cost not to exceed one hundred and fifty-four thousand, one hundred and four dollars, to be paid from Title I Part A. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Just, uh, that, uh, change in font drives my eyes crazy.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number four, to approve the adoption of the I-LIT English Language Arts English Language Development Series for grades six through twelve, core materials for newcomer English learners. The series will serve as our base program in English Language Arts and English Language Development, ELD, for secondary newcomers for the next eight years, and will include both print and online resources. The cost of the new adoption is approximately nine hu, ninety-six thousand, five hundred and fifty, five hundred and forty-five dollars to cover a total cost, to cover a total of eight years of ELD courses, grades six through twelve, and will be paid from the District General Fund. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number five, to approve the adoption of Mati, Mati, Matematicas, Diarias, as the core mathematics program of the first-grade dual-language immersion, DLI, program. The program will include both print and online resources. The cost of the DLI first-grade mathematics adoption is approximately one hundred, excuse me, is that one hundred?
Eleven.
Eleven thousand, three hundred dollars for one year and will be paid from the District General Fund. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
I need a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number six, to approve an agreement of Option Year Two with Practical, Practical for Medi-Cal Local Education Agency, LEA, billing option services effective July first, twenty seventeen, through June thirtieth, twenty eighteen. The district shall pay Practical eight-point-five percent, or not to exceed eight, eighty thousand dollars per year, of the current federal match rate of claims submitted to the Department of Healthcare Services. If the annual fees exceed ten to ten percent, the difference will be rebated back to the district. All costs to be paid from the LEA fund. So I have a motion to approve.
So moved?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number seven, to adopt Resolution Number sixteen dash four, excuse me, sixteen dash seventeen dash thirty-four, authorizing staff to process the necessary transfers of appropriations to revise budget amounts during the course of the fiscal year to allow appropriation of excess funds, transfers between designated and/or unappropriated fund balances, and in expenditure classifications, or balance any expenditure classification of the budget. Do I have a motion to approve, to adopt?
I'll make the motion with discussion.
I'll second with discussion.
Okay. Mr. Martinez first?
I was just going to say, because I, I ask this every year, Ms. I was just going to say, because I ask this every year, Mr. Islam probably knows what's coming. We did not specify in this item that this resolution does not include Measure Y funds.
You're correct. The resolutions are primarily for general fund, because anything to, during the year, we align our budget based on our need, and we transfer this fund from within the program and outside the, outside the program. This required, with your approval, authorize us to do that to as district need during the year. So, this does not speak for any other fund.
I know, but for my own peace of mind, can we, you know, just add that in there?
Yes, we can.
Thank you.
We can.
Okay, Mr. Martinez?
Yes, just for the public, this allows us to transfer funds in between, kind of like when you have your checkbook at home and you have to rob Peter to pay Paul for a short period of time. Things are starting to get tight, as we will see in the eighteen-nineteen budget. We're doing a lot with the money for our kids, a lot in technology. So, we may have to actually utilize this quite often, and it's zero balances if you look at the bottom end. But if there's questions, you know, Mohammed can answer them.
Yeah, and this allow us to serve need, not holding things, bring back to the board every board agenda twice a month. And then that could be problematic for us to serve our need to our students, classrooms, and other purposes. So, this authorize again, within the operating budget, to align the budget where there's a need.
In a timely manner.
In a timely manner, so we don't delay serving our students and our programs.
Yeah, Madam Chair, thank you.
Okay. No other discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number eight, to adopt Resolution Number sixteen dash seventeen dash thirty-five, which approves the plan to spend the monies received from the Education Protection Account, EPA, on instruction. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number nine, to ratify the tentative settlement agreement between Rialto Unified School District and the Communication Workers of America, CWA. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Some discussion.
Yes.
It is not very clear in every item. I had to really look to make sure that this was a daytime rate. I knew that the dollar amount specified daytime rate, and finally, it says day-to-day substitute teacher. But the others do not really say it, and if I was scanning it, I would have missed it entirely. So, I just wanted in the minutes to specify that this is a daytime rate, unless it's otherwise.
It is a daytime rate.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that's it. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number ten, to approve the recommendations of the Administrative Hearing Panel, AHP, stipulation case numbers sixteen dash seventeen seventy-two, sixteen dash seventeen seventy, sixteen dash seventeen dash sixty-eight, sixteen dash seventeen dash sixty-six, sixteen dash seventeen dash sixty-five, sixteen dash seventeen dash sixty-two, sixteen dash seventeen dash sixty. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, and, oh, we don't have a motion to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay, next we'll go to adjournment. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the time is now eight forty-nine, and we are adjourned.
The next meeting of the Rialto Board of Education will be held Wednesday, June 21st, at 7:00 PM, right here.
Thank you.